Jessica Ortega is in the building, so we can start with our first items. So today's date is September 23rd, 2024, and it is 4:33. Ms. Anna, can you confirm quorum, please?
Yes. Mayor Norrie Gonzalez-Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Procham Ruben Plata.
Present.
Councilwoman Marissa Erna.
Present.
Councilman Alberto Vela.
Present.
Mayor, we've established quorum, and Councilwoman Jessica Ortega is in the building.
Yes, that's correct. There she is, coming in. Okay. The next item is invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come before you today in humility and faith. We thank you for all you have given us and the many blessings in our lives. We ask for your guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with courage and wisdom. Help us to remember your love and grace and to be faithful in our service to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item is disclosure of conflicts of interest. Was anything filed, Ms. Anna?
Yes, ma'am. We've got the standing one for Mayor Procham Ruben Plata in regards to executive session item number two.
Okay, thank you so much. Next item are presentations, and the first one is the Fire Prevention Month. Chief Garcia?
We decided to bring Sparky with us this evening, so.
Yay!
Awesome.
All right. Mayor and council. Again, whereas the City of Mission is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting the City of Mission, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas smoke alarms detect smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of a fire in which you may have just seconds to escape safely, and whereas working smoke alarms save lives by providing early warning of fire so you and your family can safely escape, and whereas City of Mission residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the alarms and knows how to respond, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas City of Mission first responders are dedicated to reducing occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and public fire safety education, and whereas the 2024 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Smoke Alarms Make Them Work For You," effectively serves to remind us it is important to develop a home escape plan with all members of the household and practice it regularly. Whereas now, therefore, we, the City of Council, the City of Mission, do hereby proclaim, 6th through the 12th, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week, and invite all citizens to our open house to be held at Leo Pena Placita Park at 803 North Conway on October the 4th, 2024, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and urge all the citizens of the City of Mission that smoke alarms make them work for you, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the City of Mission Fire and Emergency Services proclaimed on this 23rd day of September 2024.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
How are you doing, Sparky?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Second. There's a motion and a second to accept the proclamation as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you so much for being here, and it is a very important thing to make our residents aware of how important smoke alarms are. It's just, it's sad that we have lost some residents in the last year to fires, so I'm glad that y'all are here. I love seeing the team here. Y'all are doing a great job, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much.
We'll go down and take a picture with you. And Sparky.
And Sparky.
Okay, thank you. The next proclamation is a Food Safety Awareness Month.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Thank you for having us today for this recognition for National Food Safety Education Month. With us today, I have my team of health inspectors, Yesenia Lugo, Desiree Santiago, and Aaron Ochoa. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas September is National Food Safety Education Month, a month dedicated to promoting the safe practices of food handling and preparation, and whereas the City of Mission is strongly committed to food safety and to highlighting food safety critical role in the health and well-being of residents in Mission, Texas through the prevention of foodborne illnesses, and whereas the City of Mission Health Department focuses on protecting public health by working diligently to ensure the safety of the city's retail food establishments by inspections and education, whereas the City of Mission Health Department provides food safety inspections for and education for more than 600 retail food establishments in Mission on the safe handling, preparation, and food storage of food, both in educational inspections and consultations, whereas the federal government estimates that 48 million persons or one of every six people get foodborne infections each year. Of those, 128,000 are hospitalized and 3,000 die from their foodborne illness. Now, therefore, to further the awareness of the value of food inspections, the City Council of the City of Mission do hereby proclaim September 2024 National Food Safety Education Month in Mission, Texas. We encourage the people of Mission, Texas, to celebrate the importance of food safety with educational activities and observances for remote food safety measures in the City of Mission, proclaim this 23rd day of 2024.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
I saw movement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the proclamation as read for Food Safety Awareness Month. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Thank you so much. You want to come up here?
Sure.
I think it's easier. Okay, the next item is our Employee of the Month for August. Ms. Moya?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Ms. Trabetas, today we are here to present to you our Employee of the Month for August, which is Officer Adam Barera. And he was nominated by Sergeant Delgado and Chief Torres, and the nomination reads as follows. Detective Barera is consistently promoting and maintaining a positive attitude. He is welcoming and demonstrates professionalism in all he does and has abided by the goals and values of our department. He is courteous to the public, his coworkers, supervisors, and the victims of crime. On August 21st, 2024, he completed one year in the Criminal Investigations Bureau. During this time, he was assigned 298 cases, of which he has closed 264. This shows proper time management, consistency, dedication, and commitment to his duties and our public, as much legwork and follow-up is needed to complete and close cases. We thank you, Officer Barera, for all you do on a daily basis. We appreciate you and the outstanding service that you provide to our community, and we congratulate you on your one-year anniversary with CID.
Congratulations, Barera. Would you like to say a few words?
No.
No? Are you sure?
Just honored and privileged to serve the City of Mission. I've been here for 17 years. Hopefully, I can continue on there in five, six years. I appreciate the opportunity and also my colleagues working side by side with them and taking care of them.
Another 17. Another 17.
You want to go down there? Yeah, we'll go down. We'll go down. Okay, the next item is a report from the Rio Grande Valley Humane Society.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Manager, Commissioners. Thank you all. So for May, we, excuse me, August, I'm a little behind. For August, we had a save rate of 95%. Our intake was 93 dogs, 68 cats, per a total of 161 animals that arrived at our shelter. We had 100 adoptions, that is 58 dogs, 42 cats. 15 dogs were reclaimed. Those were the owners that came in to pick up their dog. Transferred to rescue was four dogs. Returned to field, 26 cats. Died in care, unfortunately, was four pets, and euthanized were four. Those were the kittens that failed to thrive without a mom, and our team wasn't able to nurture them back to health. Unfortunately, they were too underweight. This past weekend, we did have a free microchip clinic. We had up to 250 free microchips for City of Mission residents. That was in partnership with the City of Mission. We had 192 pets and owners show up and were microchipped. We also had three adoptions for the month of August, and a fourth one being our mega adoption in Houston, where 32 animals got adopted. We look forward to the month of September numbers, and welcome you all to join us at the shelter any day of the week. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item is a report from our chamber. Vanessa?
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, and of course, our City Manager. On behalf of the Greater Mission Chamber of Commerce, I have a report for you. We now have our annual member awards winners. This year, Business of the Year Award will go to Rick Brown Funeral Home. Business Leader of the Year will go to Mr. Jose G. Vargas. And Community Impact of the Year Award will go to Yaki Animal Rescue. Oh, you're gonna clap. So we still have sponsorship opportunities available for our annual Member Awards Gala, which is happening next Wednesday, October the 3rd. We have half tables that begin at $500. As far as chamber activities, we also have our ribbon cutting that we have for tomorrow evening. It's for Taquería Ubedo. That'll be tomorrow evening from 7:00 to 7:30 p.m. We also have our Chamber Champions Ambassador Meeting, which will be taking place on Wednesday, September 25th, from 11:00 to 12:00 p.m. at the Bungalows on Sherry. Then we are also hosting a webinar in collaboration with UTRGV SBDC. It's on payroll compliance. That will be taking place this Thursday from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. And then we have our coffee croissant and commerce mixer, which will focus on healthcare insurance education, and that will be taking place on October the 15th from 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. Also, our Discover Mission Division is, they participated this weekend at the Benson Outdoor Skills Showcase for the BOSS event. We promoted the recreational activities available here in the City of Mission. This event takes place every year, and it gives the community an opportunity to explore our beautiful state park. There were food vendors, wellness demonstrators, and outdoor skills activities for our community to enjoy. We had over 350 people in attendance, so we're happy about that. And the next thing on our list is to prepare for our next signature events. We have our annual member appreciation breakfast, which will be taking place on November 21st. And then we have our health fair, which will take place in December, from December 5th through the 6th. So we encourage you all to engage in our activities, and we invite the community to reach out to us, either through social media, or on our website, or directly to our office. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm also gonna pass these out to you all, so you can have a copy.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Next item that we have on our agenda is departmental reports. Those were in our packets. Anyone has any questions? Comments? Or a motion to accept?
I'm going to accept the reports as presented.
Second. There's a motion and a second to accept that departmental reports as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Next item is citizens' participation. Ms. Anna, has anyone signed up?
Yes, ma'am. We have a couple. We have Taylor Kramer, and he will be speaking on Agenda Item Number 12, Authorization to Purchase Beer, Wine, and Liquor for Resale at the Mission Event Center and Sherry Municipal Golf Course.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. My name is Taylor Kramer, and I live at 1100 North Ware Road in McAllen, Texas. Okay, so I'm here to talk tonight about, so this board is about to authorize a purchase of beer and liquor for the Mission Event Center. I would expect that the members of the City Council to follow all rules and regulations of having adult beverages in a public or commercial space. Drinking alcohol is an adult activity, and there are laws in place that define the mature nature of that activity and affirm it is not appropriate for children. I wanted to bring this to the board's attention. Per this flyer, at the upcoming Fiesta Day Colors 8/1924 at the Mission Event Center, there will be an all-ages drag show by RGV Pride, a STEP South Texas Equality Project member group. If this drag show, scheduled on October 19th, commences at the Mission Event Center, this would be a direct violation of Texas SB 12, restricting sexually-oriented performances on the premises of a commercial enterprise, public property, or in the presence of an individual younger than 18 years of age. As there are regulations for liquor, there are regulations for protecting children from adult sexual content and activities. In this flyer, on RGV Pride, it reads, "Drag entertainers, music, all ages, welcome. Free admission for kids under 10." RGV Pride is a member of STEP. Last year, Citizens Against Sexualization of Children informed the Mission City Council about STEP's all-ages drag shows with men dancing, with men in lingerie dancing for toddlers who tip them dollar bills. There are many videos and articles of STEP's inappropriate behavior with children they deem family fun. The scheduled event at Mission's Event Center is still weeks away. I felt the duty to inform the council so they can take the proper precautions as to not violate SB 12 or the innocence of the Rio Grande Valley's children. Concerned parents all over Texas are watching this closely. Thank you for your time, and I have a packet for everybody, too.
Okay, thank you.
I'll conclude my speech.
Okay, then, there's a second person that signed up?
Yes, ma'am. We have Ms. Karen Pruitt. She's gonna speak on Agenda Item Number 19 and 34. 19, Authorization to Enter into a Contract with Civic Plus, a sole-source vendor for the implementation redesign of a new official website for the City of Mission. And Item Number 34, Approval of Public Relations Communications and Media Relations Consulting Services Agreement with KM International.
My name is Karen Pruitt. Good afternoon. I reside at 2101 Mob Drive in Mission, Texas. I would like to first speak about Item Number 34. This is renewing a contract with KM International. There was a contract approved last year on August 14th unanimously by the council members at that time. According to the official minutes of the meeting, the contract was to provide public relations and communications consulting services and media relations consulting services to the City of Mission for the promotion, I'm sorry, for the purposes of promoting and marketing city news activities and accomplishments within and among the Mission community and broader community at large, as well as developing and implementing strategies for effective relations with media outlets to obtain optimal media coverage on an ongoing basis at a monthly rate of $6,750. This is the same amount on today's agenda. Just, I am a math teacher, and just to do a little math, that would be $81,000 a year. If you break that down, 52 weeks, 40 hours a week, that's $39 an hour. As a taxpayer, taxpayer, I would like to see exactly what marketing KM has provided. I know the city currently has a media relations department with four employees, according to the website. So I'm a little confused why additional services would need to be contracted out. I have watched many posts on Facebook, Instagram, and other media platforms. To my knowledge, the in-house media team is responsible for all of these posts. I personally am a contracted worker, and I must show my deliverables to my, my company that I contract with, and I would expect the same. As far as public relations go, Jesse Lermah with 311 is a person contacting public constituents and serving the city completely with the public relations. It saddens me to see that his position has been eliminated. It saddens me to see that his position has been eliminated. The reason why I bring up the city website is because, um, according to tips, this KM International LLC also provides website development. So if we are, if you are, uh, indeed going to approve a contract with them, I would hope that that also would include the website instead of also spending $23,000 for two contracts alone, totaling over $100,000. I'll just end it there.
No, you can continue, it's okay.
Okay. For a city who just voted to raise taxes because of financial instability, cuts need to come from unnecessary services, not from positions within the city that are actually helping citizens with the day-to-day issues. I hope to hear some discussion on both of these items and I hope to see some deliverables from KM International at today's meeting. And please consider the necessity of both of these contracts as well as the outputs they will have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pruitt. Ms. Anna, was that it? Okay. So we're going to move on to public hearings, planning and zoning recommendations. First item is a conditional use permit.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmember, and City Manager. Item Number 8 is a conditional use permit to have three shipping containers for office and warehouse use at 1405 Business Park Drive. This is all of Law 2, replat of Law 13, Expressway Business Park Phase 8. This is industrial zone. The applicant is Art Renati LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 1,034 feet south of Trinity Street along the east side of Business Park Drive. The applicant would like to manufacture shipping container homes, also known as tiny homes, to be used as affordable housing. These units would be built and shipped to different regions in Texas as well as other states. He would like to, a conditional use permit, to move three 40-by-8 shipping containers. One of the containers will be transformed as an office with two restrooms for the use of employees and the other two will be used as a warehouse base. He is also proposing to construct two 50-by-75 metal roofs to provide shade for the manufacture of the tiny homes. He requests to approve the project has been planned in two phases to allow time for company progression. The first phase will consist of the office and a warehouse and a metal room. The second phase will consist of a warehouse and metal room. Access to the site will be off of Business Park Drive. Hours of operation proposed are Monday to Friday from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. He's proposing to have 15 employees parking. In reviewing the floor plan, there's a total of 15 parking spaces being proposed. Based on the square footage of the structures, there is a total of 16 parking spaces required, exceeding code by nine. The applicant will have to comply with landscaping requirements. Staff notes that a similar CUP was approved for sheds by George on January 8, 2014. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation after obtaining the license. Must comply with all city codes, acquisition of a business license prior to occupancy, and CUP not to be transferable to others. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Yes? Oh, yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Ernesto Gonzalez. My, uh, address is, uh, 410 Sabine Street, Mission, Texas. That's where I live. And my work address, which is where my office is, is 1404 Business Park Drive, also in Mission, Texas. So, uh, well, honorable board, I appreciate very much the opportunity to be here and, and present to you and to, uh, you know, Mayor, uh, Gonzalez Garza, uh, City Manager, Mr. Perez. Thank you very much for everybody, you know, to the whole board. Uh, we're very excited with this particular project. We have been working on this. Uh, it was an opportunity that came to us back in November of last year. Um, I've been in manufacturing, you know, all my life. Basically, uh, well, the last 25 years, I have been, uh, you know, working very hard on the manufacturing side of it. And, uh, back in November, a friend of mine, which is also part of a, a member of an entrepreneurial organization called YEC, called me asking to see if I knew anybody in Mexico, since we have, uh, you know, very good ties with Mexico. I've been, uh, working with Maquiladoras, uh, for a while, um, and, uh, asking if we have, uh, if we had a solution to be able to build tiny homes. Uh, the crisis is of housing in the United States is huge. Uh, currently, you know, after the pandemic, a lot of people have suffered for not having an opportunity to be able to find a place, or an affordable place, to be able to, uh, you know, basically bring their kids and find some safety for their families at a reasonable price. I mean, uh, yes, during the pandemic, it was amazing to be able to have, uh, wages at 20, $25 to work, uh, in Amazon or in Walmart or in different other areas. Currently, that's not the, you know, that's, uh, very far away from the current reality. People are getting paid anywhere between $7.25 to $9 an hour and still expected to be able to go and lease a place for, uh, $1,500 a month, $2,000 a month, which is obviously, I mean, just mathematically speaking, it doesn't work. Uh, so when we were approached, uh, to, uh, find a solution for, for this particular area and to find a manufacturing opportunity, uh, we were able to put together a, uh, you know, some plans for, for this particular friend that I told you about. And, uh, now we, uh, started, obviously, with, uh, all the drawings and everything else that we need to do to be able to, uh, you know, to provide, uh, safety to families here in the United States. Uh, so far, we have been able to build, uh, 20, 20 apartments, which is a total of 10 containers. What we do is we take shipping containers and turn them into, uh, I guess duplexes. Each, uh, 40-by-8 or 8-by-40 feet container can fit, uh, two small efficiencies for, so to speak, with a bathroom, with a kitchen, with a, uh, we also provided with a refrigerator, with a stove, uh, with a mini split for air conditioning purposes. You know, for Texas, we who live in Texas, we know how much of a necesidad that is. Um, it fits a queen-size bed. So, uh, you know, it's, it's, you know, something that, that, you know, we're very excited about. We have been able to hire, uh, already, uh, give them a job to, uh, close to 19 people. Actually, 19 people, we hired the 19th person today. Uh, we will need to, uh, you know, continue, uh, growing. The, the goal is to be able to manufacture 25, uh, container homes. Uh, well, right now, the, the, uh, the one that we're, uh, working on is a 25, uh, container home purchase order. We have an additional, uh, purchase order for another 100, which would be 200 apartments. Uh, in addition to that, we have a forecast from our clients of 300, uh, apartments, which is 600, 300 containers, which is 600 units, uh, or 600 apartments for the next 12 months. For, uh, the second year in business, that our forecast is between 1,000 and 1,500, uh, containers, which will give housing for, uh, anywhere between 2,000 to 3,000 families. So, uh, we're working very fast, we're working very hard, and, uh, we're making it happen, you know? So like I said, we already shipped, uh, 20 efficiency units, or apartments, out. And, uh, well, I mean, we're very happy also to be doing this in Mission, Texas, since, I mean, this is where we live and this is where our home is. And, uh, it's definitely a place where both the city and, uh, the economic development have given us a tremendous amount of support.
Okay.
I guess that's it.
All righty, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor, uh, City Council, Techno Garcia, CEO of the Mission Economic Development Corporation. Um, just to reiterate a little bit of what Mr. Gonzalez said, but also to let, uh, the, uh, the council and the public know that this is a project that the EDC has got behind. Mayor, as you know, being on the EDC board, uh, we're, uh, supporting Mr. Gonzalez in his efforts, uh, to create, uh, this new business. Um, as he mentioned, he's hired, uh, 19, uh, people already. Uh, the aim, I think, or the goal is to get about 100 folks employed there and creating these, uh, these small homes made out of, uh, shipping containers and, uh, ship them across, across the state and, and around the country. And, uh, this is an, an excellent opportunity for us to showcase what we can do in Mission and, and provide, uh, uh, create a new industry and also provide, uh, new, uh, good-paying jobs, uh, for Missionites. So we continue to grow with him, um, and hope that, uh, even if he, he gets anywhere close to his goals, this would be a good, uh, a good, uh, thing for the city and something for us to showcase. So I just want to let you know that we're, we are totally behind, uh, this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Is there anyone online? Nope, okay. Are there any questions for sta, from our staff or comments from the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a... There's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit as presented, uh, which would carry in, uh, the adoption of an ordinance number 5553. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, next item is a rezoning request.
Item Number 9 is a rezoning for Lot 8, Block 5, Taras Estates, Number 9, Phase 1. This is from R2 duplex, fourplex to R3 multifamily. The applicant is Erica Padron. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance will be needed. The subject site is located approximately 147 feet north of Basalea Street along the west side of Inspiration Road. Surrounding zones include duplex, fourplex to the north, residential and agricultural to the east, residential to the west, and neighborhood commercial to the south. The future land use map shows this area as modern, modern density residential. The proposal does not comply with City's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. Modern density residential uses reflect townhomes, mobile homes, duplexes, which zonings would include R1, R2, and R4. An R3 zone requires a high-density residential designation. This category includes fourplexes, multifamily, mobile home, and RV parts. Based on the size of the property, it would be difficult to comply with the R3 and subdivision requirements. Staff did mail out 22 notices to property owners within the 200-foot radius to solicit comments in favor against the request. Staff has not received any comments. Staff recommends denial. PNC and staff recommend denial. If the council is inclined to approve this item, they would need a fourth vote to overturn PNC's decision. This is a public hearing. This item is now before you.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this request? Anyone here that would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Okay, is there anyone online? Nope, okay. Are there any questions for staff? Comments?
I'm going to deny the request as recommended by staff and Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Okay, there's a motion, any second to deny the request as recommended by staff and our Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, this would be to deny the request. All in favor to deny the request, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. And that concludes our public hearing. We'll move on to consent agenda. Uh, that is Items Number 10 through...
Yes. Mayor, Commissioner, I'd like to table Item Number 19 and 34.
Okay, there is, uh, a request by our city manager to table Items Number 19, which is on the consent agenda, and Number 34, which is, uh, on our regular agenda. Is there a motion to table?
I'll make a motion to table Items Number...
Okay.
19 and 34.
34. 34.
34, yes, ma'am.
Yes, 34. Is there a second?
Second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second to table Items Number 19 and 34 as listed on our agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Okay. So on our consent agenda, it is, um... Items Number 10 through 25, with the exception of Number 19, that's been tabled.
So then we're supposed to do 19 and then when we get to 34, we table all this time?
No, we, we did them both at the same time.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda with the exception of those two items. With that item plus the approval and authorization Number 34.
Okay. All in favor to ta, table those items, uh, to, I'm sorry, to approve, uh, the consent agenda as, as presented, less Item Number 19. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. So we will go to...
Mayor, Item 24 would have Resolution 1918.
Yes. Duly noted. So Item Number 26 is a preliminary plat approval.
Mayor, Item Number 26 is a preliminary plat approval for Sonoma Ranch Subdivision Phase 1. This is a tract of land containing 22.84 acres of land, being a part of portion of Lot 30-9 West Addition to Sherland. It's own residential. The developer is Jason Igarsa and the engineer is Javierino Jose Engineering. The subdivision, this subdivision is located along the east side of Mayberry Road, approximately 1,320 feet north of Mile 2. The developer is proposing 108 single-family residential homes. They would have city water, city sewer. City engineer has reviewed and approved the drainage report. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to capital payment of recovery fees, payment of park fees, provide water district exclusion, assignment of water rights. This item is now before you.
All right, are there any questions for staff on this plat? Any discussion? If not, is there a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Is this property backs with a property on Brian?
Yes.
It, uh, yeah, it's kind of... Okay, the next item?
Item Number 27 is a preliminary plat approval for Sonoma Ranch Subdivision Phase 2. This is a tract of land containing 16.14 acres of land, being a part of portion of Lot 30-9 West Addition to Sherland. It's its own residential. The developer is Jason Igarsa. The engineer is Javierino Jose Engineering. This subdivision is located along the east side of Mayberry Road, approximately 2,036 feet north of Mile 2. The developer is proposing 75 single-family residential lots. They would have city water, city sewer. PNC and staff recommended approval, subject to payment of, uh, capital sewer recovery fees, payment of park fees, provide water district exclusion, assignment of water rights. This item is now before you.
Okay, are there any questions for staff?
So is this subdivision completed?
No. This subdivision, they're barely in the preliminary stage. But they're doing it in two different phases to start. That's why they, that's why you're seeing Phase 1 and 2. But they're barely going to start the process.
Mayor, I'm going to approve.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat for Sonoma Ranch Subdivision Phase 2. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Next item?
I'm going to complete with a final, final plat approval. I'm going to complete with a final.
And pre, yes.
Mayor, City Council, Techno Garcia, CEO of the, of the Mission Economic Development Corporation. Uh, and I think we're on Number 28, Approval of Resolution of the City Council of Mission, Texas, Accepting the Conveyance of Properties to the City from the Mission Economic Development Corporation, Authorizing the Mayor to Execute the General Warranty Deal and Providing an Effective Date.
Yes, that's correct. Are there any questions or discussion on this item?
What property is this?
These are the, um, two lots, uh, right behind the, uh, the park of Oconway, two of the six lots that were...
Two houses.
Yes, these are the two. Um, I would, uh, also refer, please, I'll take any questions, but also refer to, uh, City Manager or the City Attorney but also refer to, uh, city manager or the city attorney if there's any, uh, other details you need.
The addresses are eight hundred Perkins and eight oh two Perkins.
Uh, yes ma'am, that is correct.
That's part of the whole tract that we're looking at trying to also get from United so that we have a nice, uh, master plan park.
Going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number nineteen nineteen, accepting the conveyance of properties to the city of Mission from the Economic Development Corporation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item?
Good afternoon, mayor and councilman and women. Uh, I'd like to present, uh, where are we at? We're on the resolution to ex... Where am I? Okay, I'm sorry, I meant in the resolution number seventeen eighty-nine, adopting the public funds investment policy and strategy. As per chapter twenty-two fifty-six of the Texas Government Code, known, known as the Public Funds Investment Act, the city is required to adopt the investment policy and strategy on an annual basis through our resolutions. No changes have been made on, on, on this policy, and staff and city manager recommend approval. Resolution number?
Nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty.
Are there any questions? Comments? A motion?
Who signs on behalf of the, for investments and all that?
At the moment, uh, my assistant, due to the fact that, uh, Mr. Pettis and I have to go and get certified. It's been a while since I was an investment officer, so I need to get...
Do we have, do we have that approval? Then we have to approve that?
To go to the investment policy?
Yeah, to...
Yes.
To appoint me?
Who is assigned?
It's usually, it's governed in the...
And the finance director. Right. But what he's saying is actually true. We have to get, uh, the city council to, um, authorize us to go. So that'll probably be in your next week, because it's not until December, so we won't put it till October.
But it's usually the, the city manager, the finance director, and the assistant.
In fact, it's, it's actually governed by this policy that you're passing. So that policy, which identifies who exactly is the, the receiving officer over, over the city. And on top of that, you have to take, which we already have, when you, Mr. Pettis, come to office as well as we done, is we pass two separate, uh, two separate ordinances. One was for tech school, and one was for MBS securities, basically designated them as officers of, uh, of those organizations to be able to...
To invest.
So the only one we have left is a CISA. He is assistant currently.
What is his title?
Assistant.
He says assistant.
He's the assistant finance director.
I'm going to approve, mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution number nineteen twenty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
Item number thirty, um, to authorize staff to engage the highest qualified firm found acceptable in negotiations for the auditing services and authorize city manager to execute contract incident there too. On August the twelfth, the city council authorized staff to solicit requests for proposals for auditing service in accordance with Texas Professional Service Procurement Act. Proposals were referred to an evaluation committee appointed to review and evaluate on the basis of, to demonstrate competence and qualification to perform the services. Three proposal, proposals were received and evaluated on said criteria outlined on the request for proposals. Of the proposals, the evaluation committee deemed all firms acceptable and qualified to perform the cert, auditing services based on the evaluation, evaluation conducted, and staff will engage selected firm in a fair and reasonable firm rates. Burton McCumber and Longoria was identified as the highest qualified firm and is being recommended by staff for approval. Further approval, as staff recommended, was received from the internal audit committee at the most recent meeting on September the tenth, twenty twenty-four. Staff recommends approval. And the city manager as well.
And the audit, and the audit committee.
And audit committee.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to engage in the highest qualified firm found acceptable in negotiations for auditing services and authorize the city manager to execute contract. And this would be with Burton, McCumber, and Longoria.
That is correct, mayor.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Okay.
And it just to, I might add, if we could get a timeline on, on their services, on their start date and, and their progress.
Yes, we'll try to get engagement later on to them so we can, if they can provide that to us.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Based on there with this new firm, when do you anticipate our twenty twenty-four audit report will be completed? I really would like for us to get it on time.
That's why I'm asking for a timeline, so that we can have, know that.
Can you please make sure you bring that to the council and let us know? I'd like the mayor say, I would like for you to give us a timeline, the way, I do say the paper, so...
Tell the contract approved and timeline.
And you're, we're, we're speaking to next year's audit. What's the status on our current year?
Well, we're still working at it. My target date, of course, I don't wanna be definite on this, but I'm really working hard on it. I'm hoping to get most of the items out to the auditor by the end of this week. We're just lacking around seven or eight critical ones that deals with the capital assets due to the new pronouncement, and Espida and Gatsby ninety-seven, that's giving our present staffs a hard time. So we'll get it. That's my goal.
Okay, thank you.
When, one of the meetings, you're pretty much sure us by nine thirty, twenty-four. So just keep...
Yes, we had told that we'd try to have it finished by nine thirty, twenty-four. The thing that, that threw us back is that the auditors found that we had not booked any of the garbage trucks that we purchased two years ago. So they're wanting all the documentation on that, so...
So based on that, what will be our new?
We're looking at target date that we should have everything finished to them no later than probably the middle of October. And hopefully they'll should have something back to us, to us, I don't know, probably two weeks after that, I hope.
Yeah, once, we, once we provide everything to the auditing firm, the current auditing firm, they'd say that it's taken them a month and a half in order for them to give us a complete audit report. So we're looking at, hopefully, the middle of November, the fifteenth. Uh, one of the things that we've discovered is that we're, we're not the only ones that's way behind in getting audits. There's quite a few cities out there that are late. I know when I was with the county, they were two years behind.
Yeah, but we just care about mission. We just care about mission. We just care about mission. We just care about mission.
I was gonna say that. Well, I really would like, I really would like no later than the first week of November.
Okay.
We need to...
No, I agree.
Have a deadline. I mean, and whatever needs to be done, I really feel that it needs to be done. We are way behind, and it's really hurting us.
I understand. Well, make it a point.
So now I have another question. Is the, the engagement of our, the new, um, audit firm, is that gonna delay their start?
Uh, it might, and if anything, it might, I'm, I'm hoping that I would narrow it down that if it does, it'll be for a month. But the staff, I'm basically really writing on them and, and training them because I don't wanna be saying anything derogatory or negative about the previous, uh, director. But yet, I mean, she always waited till the last minute, be it the last month, to start doing the postings. And the other staff was not trained or cross-trained to do it, so they're scrambling. Well, especially at CISA, scrambling, trying to decipher what it is that needed to get done because, I mean, she wasn't involved in, in the accounting aspect of it, just the data, the operations.
Okay, so now I have another question for you. So say that we've, um, had our audit. Is your staff ready to start your, their process for the new audit year?
We are, we just need to do some end-of-the-year adjustments, and we would be ready.
But you can't do that until next month, at the end of the year.
That is correct.
Okay, so we'll, our staff will be ready to, with information for the new audit year next month, at the end of the month.
I'm gonna strike for that, mayor, yes.
Okay, can we make that happen?
Oh, I need to.
You need to make that happen, yes. Okay.
So there will be the Halloween gift, no?
Yes. Thanksgiving, Mr. ... Okay. Okay, thank you so much, Mr. ...
Anytime, ma'am.
Okay.
Item number thirty-one is, uh, I'm requesting the acceptance of the July twenty twenty-four financial statements, uh, unadjusted financial statements. Staff and city manager recommend approval. I do apologize, I'll gonna make it a point that from now on, they are presented to you on a monthly basis. But with this new, uh, budget that we have to be working on and the financials for the previous times, that's why I didn't, wasn't able to present the other ones, but this is as of July.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Roman, but, um, you do meet quite often with our new committee that we created, which Ms. Gerlag and Mr. Plata sit on, right, to talk about all these different things?
I was introduced to them just last, on the last meeting.
Okay.
Because I've been focusing on, on, on the audit.
Well, they'll keep you on your toes.
Oh, I know, yeah.
Along with the three other board members, I'm sure.
Oh, been there.
Okay. Okay. All right, is there a motion to accept the financial statements as presented for July twenty twenty-four?
I'll make a motion to accept the unadjusted July twenty twenty-four financial statements.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the July twenty twenty-four unadjusted financial statements as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number two, thirty-two calls for the acceptance of the quarterly reports of investments for the quarter ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, including the interest earned. Okay. The total increases up to investment balances for the period, there wasn't any, and the total decreases were seven million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents, leaving a total balance of eight million, one hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and forty-six and eighty-three in outstanding investments. The total interest earned to date was one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-five cents. Uh, this portfolio is in compliance with the state law and the investment strategy and policy approved by the city council. Staff and city manager recommends approval.
Is this as of June thirtieth?
That is correct.
And how much do we have on the budget on total interest income, revenue?
Oh, I think it was a lot less than this, councilman. So we performed pretty well on, on the interest.
We perform or we?
We're performing pretty well, because the budget, it was, uh, around a hundred thousand, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Interest rates went up, so we did a good return on that.
Interest rates gone up, but the other thing is that we have more money in the bank this year than we did last year at the same time.
Andy, can you let me know tomorrow, how much do we have in the budget to make sure, as of June thirtieth?
And then copy me on it so I can let the entire council know.
Can you, I guess, just, I, okay, you'll let us know.
I think it'd be good for us to see how we're doing. I mean, so you might wanna make it a habit or whatever. Even when we purchase something, I mean, tell us how much we have on a budget versus actual. That's my recommendation. I'm going to approve, mayor, for the, a hundred, I like a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two, two twenty-one, but especially if your budget fifty thousand.
Right.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to accept the quarterly reports of investments for a quarter ending March thirty-first and June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Item number thirty-three?
Uh, I'm requesting approval of a budget amendment for the general utility capital projects and designated purposes funds. Uh, the general fund basically had, we're making an adjustment of one point three hundred and fifteen thousand in revenue and nine hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two in expenditures with a net effect of four hundred and two thousand eight. On the utility fund, we're gonna be increasing the revenues by one point four hundred, eight hundred and seventy-three thousand with expenditures of one point seven hundred and forty-nine, five hundred, which a negative, negative effect of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven. The so, solid waste fund, we're gonna increase our expenditures by fifty-four thousand, one hundred. The police state charity fund, we're recognizing revenue of twenty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. On the police federal charity fund, it's a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, and the designated purpose is basically a net effect of zero, because that's on a reimbursement basis. And staff and city manager recommend approval.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Under the general fund, you say that you're increasing revenues from one million, three hundred and fifteen, correct?
That is correct.
Where is that transfer coming from?
It's, it's more an increase on revenue. Uh, if you look at the, the package that was presented or the attachment, uh, bear with me. We're looking at the at Balaam taxes. We collected nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars more than what was budgeted. On construction material testing, it was sixty-three thousand dollars. And, uh, your swimming program recreational was eighteen thousand. Uh, the interest on investments, it was eighty thousand. Uh, sale of city equipment was seventy-eight thousand. So basically, that makes the bulk of, uh, the increase in revenues.
So under that fund, we increased a million three, but we also on expenses, nine hundred and twelve more than what we actually approved?
That is correct.
So we got, okay.
What I'm doing there, councilman, is, is I'm picking up those budget amendments that had been approved during the course of the year, and I'm just making certain that we do recognize those appropriated funds that were done during the year.
So the net effect is a positive of four hundred and two...
Our fund balance is gonna be affected by four hundred thousand.
By four hundred and two thousand.
That is correct.
Mr. Villanueva, whenever, would you say we already approved this?
Yes. That's one thing that I'd like to have changed, is that any time that they come in here and do a request and the fund is not there for them to do a budget amendment, at that point in time.
Well, I was just gonna say that, like, for example, when do we approve this? That is, and doing all of this, this is part of how you're gonna be prepared for the budget?
Yes.
For the audit, excuse me?
Yes.
So we already approved this, right?
Uh, on the, on the expenditures, yes.
On some of it, like the overtime in the fire department, which is a large number, that's being approved right now. But if you'll recall, a few months ago, anytime we end up doing anything, you requested that when we do ask for a budget amendment, I mean, uh, expenditure, we do a budget amendment right after that, or in the same, in the same line item. But that's only been done in the last few months. Before, the practice has been, we would only do it at the very end. So some of this is stuff we already approved and stuff that you didn't. Like, for example, the overtime in the fire department was not approved, and it's being approved now.
So mayor, so in the utility fund, we got a million, four hundred thousand, eight seventy-three more revenue?
That is correct.
Than what was approved.
Well, basically, on that one, what was not budgeted, the majority is a TERS reimbursement.
Well, not, not more revenue, but that is the revenue. And so the net effect there is three hundred and forty-eight thousand.
What happened is they didn't budget for the revenue, because that was an unknown, if I'm not mistaken, when they undertook those projects.
So, okay, so, so, and a million, seven forty-nine, what is that? Because that one is a net, negative.
One point seven. Those are the expenditures.
Those are the expenditures. Basically, the, the bulk of it, one point five million was on the repairs on the lift stations that were breaking down. And, and usually, that's where the bulk of the expenditures are normally happening because of the lack of maintenance on them.
And then you had, uh, the listation was wrong on the wastewater. And then you had three hundred and twenty-five thousand on maintenance on the water distribution.
So one million seven, we didn't have that in the budget, right?
No.
Well, no, that normally happens, uh, that, you know, that they just, out of, all of a sudden, they just break down, and sometimes you have a domino effect, and you need to be jumping from one part to another.
But the most part was the, the TERS project. What we didn't do is we didn't budget the TERS project, both, it looks like, the expenditures and the revenues.
What project was there that we didn't budget?
Which is that lift station.
Mayor, may...
So that's seven, seven, that means, so let's say we didn't budget the project. So how much did it cost us? How much was the actual cost? So the one point six is that part of one point seven, four nine?
Yes. Well, well, one point... Well, well, 1.5 of it is.
So out of the 1.7, 1.5 is for that lift station, is that a lift station?
Yes, it's a list station that we got reimbursed from the TERS. It's a, what was the biggest list station that we did? Where was the location of the list station that we repaired?
Why can't you not give us the list of why makes the 1.7?
It is in the packet.
It's in the packet.
What I know.
Do we have it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's on, on page 388.
So how can I feel like some hesitation to answer my question?
What, what, what I normally do in order to make it minimal is that there's going to be some line items that we're not going to be spending at all, so I reduce that budgeted amount to offset some of the additional costs that the city normally incurs. That's standard practice among cities.
So that is, so that's going to come from the general fund, right?
No, this is utility fund.
But we have a negative effect, but because we had extra money there or what?
On the general fund, you're going back to the general fund?
No, to the utility.
Oh, to the utilities.
Because in revenue, you increase it a million four, but expenditures is a million seven forty-nine.
Right, so it's going to have net effect of 349.
Negative.
That is correct.
So that effect, whatever we were anticipating at ending for the year, correct?
Yes, right.
Almost 350,000.
Right, yes.
What do you anticipate will be our ending balance on the utility fund?
No, I don't, I can get that for you.
We had handed that out during the budget. I can read my spreadsheet and tell you real quick.
Nice, okay. No, that's okay, I'll call you tomorrow.
And I'll, I'll sit at the table.
Any other questions or decisions?
Mayor, if I may, this is why I think it's imperative that we look at budgets actual quarterly, as we had discussed.
Yes.
The month after quarter end, so that we're not here today asking these kinds of questions.
So, okay. Well, I'll get that to you, but either way, we're still going to be facing this year after year.
Correct, it's just if we can monitor.
So you can be on tap.
Right.
Okay. Will do.
Maybe there's something that we can discuss at every tree. I mean, we need to approve this today?
It, yes. Because basically, what's going to happen is that the auditors normally go line by line items, and they scrutinize, and want to know reasons as to the variance. So all I'm doing right now is aligning those line items, so that way they won't have that many questions.
Because technically, when you approve the budget, we're not supposed to spend anything other than what you approved without your approval. And what we've done, been doing, is we, we wait till the very end of the year to do it all. Now, since about May, we've been, anytime we did a budget amendment or had an old furniture, we would have a budget amendment with it. And we had done them separately, and then you all instructed us to put it all in the same item. But before then, we weren't doing that. So all of this, what we're doing is wrapping it up at the end of the year. But what we've been told by the finance staff is that historically, this is how you did it at the end of the year, which I, we normally don't like to do. We should only have very few line items, like, for example, on, like, if you have a travel, or if you have motor repairs, any of the operational ones, we make adjustments so we need to have, so we can show that we did not spend more than what we're supposed to.
Well, that's why my concern, Mr. Perez, because to me, the transfer, the approval and the transfer needs to be done at the time that it's been approved.
Correct.
But if this is already being done, why do you need my approval? I mean, and I'm just speaking for myself.
No, you're exactly right.
No, what, what the council did approve was the expenditure side, okay? But we don't have a budget for that purchase. So what I'm, we're doing now is we're putting funds or appropriating funds for that purchase that had been previously approved.
If you recall, one of the comments I, discussion I had with all of you, is that we were spending money without a budget amendment, and that's what we've been doing, without budget being appropriated to be spent. And, and so we're trying to correct that, and this is cleaning it up, and you'll see any of the, the ones you'll see in the future, we will not spend money without a budget amendment attached to it. But we still have to clean this up before the end of the year, so that when they do audit, that we did not spend money without it being appropriate. I mean, you approved all the projects, you just didn't approve the budget amendment that went with it. Does that make any sense?
Those were the items.
I myself rather the auditor find out. I mean, it's public information.
And that's why they scrutinize the minutes, that if they don't see it in the minutes, they're going to question it big time.
Yeah, but they also see that we do it on the last minute of the year. So what's the difference?
Well.
You know, you, you understand my concern?
No, I understand.
I don't, I can't speak why they didn't write, write us up and put that in your management letter last year?
I read, I read it them saying, you know what? They put it in the management letter, that it, it was not done at the time that, or the occurrence, I mean, then, me, me, and I'm just speaking for myself, to approving something that I had questions on. That's me.
Yep.
I understand.
And, and your point is very valid.
Because I've been asking for this for many years. To me, and then whenever they tell me, well, the budget is, the audit is not done because of so many amendments or, or trying to reconcile. I mean, to me, I feel like, you know what? Once it's approved, once it's expensed, I don't want to even talk about it. That's, you know, it's, it's done, it's already been approved. But you bring it back again, it's just like, I don't know, it's just confusing.
Well, well, that's one of the things that I want to align for the future years, is that make certain that they do present that budget amendment at that point in time, and all, because these are all those items that's subject to a budget amendment, so like, why aren't we?
In my humble opinion, it's just like, you know what? It's what's done like this in the past is not the correct way to do. We got new management, we got a new finance director, it will be corrected.
And that's what I'm trying to do.
But I, I'm going to add to, to the conversation here is that there were plenty of times that we made some changes to, to both either expenditures or revenues, and we did make a budget amendment at the same time. So there, it was done correctly sometimes, but not all the time.
Correct.
So I think that's the, the, the policy that we need to, to implement, is that from now on, that there isn't any deviation from that, from that process.
I agree, Mayor.
So that anytime there's a, a change in, in revenue or expenditures, that a budget amendment accompanies that item. Like I said, it, we did do it sometimes, but not all the time that I can remember in, in past meetings and agendas, but I think it's, it's important that, that we, we just follow a policy from now on and don't deviate from, from that.
I make certain that that happens.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So I, at this time, I would like to have a, an, a, a motion to accept the budget amendments as presented.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
No.
Okay. Item passes for one.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number thirty-five is, well, Chief told us here with Mission PD. Good evening.
Hi, Chief.
Item number thirty-five is authorization to purchase two mobile surveillance trailers, which is the Skywatch Towers, in the amount of $116,307.90 via TIPS contract 230105, utilizing fiscal year 2023 Stone Garden grant funds. This equipment is used to deter all burglary of vehicle, auto thefts, any other common crime, and to monitor heavily populated commercial and residential areas. City manager and I recommend approval.
Okay. Are there any questions or a motion?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to authorize a purchase of two mobile security surveillance trailers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. And just FYI, this is a Stone Garden grant fund.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, thank you so much.
So like, this one is not on the budget from last year, right?
No, sir, this is through Stone Garden.
That we got additional money?
That is correct, sir.
And do you already have that money?
We do.
Yes. Okay, next item.
Item number thirty-six, ratify the lease of ten 2025 Chevrolet Tahos, two-wheel drives, four doors, in the face value of $1,000,009,815.60, and approval of five leased 2025 Ram 1500 two-wheel drive crew cabs, in the value amount of $276,253 for units budgeted in the 2025 fiscal year via buy board contract 652.21. The lease is through DMN, DNM leasing. The Tahos are for three years, 36 months, and the pickup trucks for investigators are for five years. City manager and I recommend approval.
Mayor, I'd like to make an approval, but I have a question for the chief.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and then discussion.
So the ten Chevy Tahos, chief, are for patrol?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay. Instead of the, we're going into the Tahos, we don't have any more of the Ford SUV ones?
We're having a lot of problems with the Ford Explorers across the nation. In fact, we had about 10 or 11 of them that were in the shop. At one time, we had 10 that had engine or transmission problems. So we're having a lot of problems with the Ford Explorers, and this is across the country, not just in the city mission.
Okay.
And when do we anticipate receiving them?
The trucks could be about four to five months, give or take, and the Tahos, we're looking at about a year. Most, most police packaged vehicles are, are taking a year to come in, give or take. By the time they come in, they go through the process, and then they get dressed with all the emergency equipment. It's taking about a year.
So do you get like a down payment to keep the order going, or you pay the full amount?
No, sir, these are leases, we're paying by the month.
Okay, yes, okay.
Yes.
It's a PO that we need.
But we don't have to pay anything in advance?
Through a PO.
Yeah, we, we only pay upon receipt. That's when, that's when the lease starts.
That's good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am. Item number thirty-seven.
No, we need to go.
I'm sorry.
So there is a.
Can I make a motion?
I may.
And a second to ratify the purchase of Chevrolet Tahos and Ram 1500s. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
Item number thirty-seven, authorization to surplus three Chevy Tahos, police units from the Mission Police Department to be donated to Santa Maria Independent School District Police Department. The authorization to surplus one 2015 Chevy Tahoe, one 2012 Chevy Tahoe, and one 2013 Chevy Tahoe. The Chevy Tahoe police units are currently at no use to the Mission Police Department, and their miles are 238,991 on one. The second one has 259,000 miles, 175, and the third one has 279,785. City manager and I recommend approval.
I'm going to approve for the donation to Santa Maria ISD.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution, resolution number 1921, authorizing Mission PD to surplus Chevrolet Tahos and donate to Santa Maria ISD. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Item thirty-eight, authorization to purchase digital water meters via sole source, letters included in your packet from Aquometric Company. Digital AMI meters will be purchased as, on an as-needed basis via sole source from Aquometric. Those digital meters will be used for installation of new residents' commercial water services throughout the city of Mission. What I just passed out to you was the revised sales quote dated September 16th, which is under the, the budget amount of 450,000. So the sales quote I just passed to you was 449,293.67 cents.
I'm going to approve.
Actually, Mayor, I do have a question. Do we go out for bids on this?
It's sole source, and the other thing, yes. So the system that we have in place, it's, you can only use the census meter, and Aquometric is the, the sole, sole provider.
Okay.
By contract to be able to resell here in our area, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I still move.
Had you made the motion? Okay, and who seconded?
I did.
Veto, okay. There's a motion, any second to authorize a purchase of digital water meters via sole source from Aquameter Sales Company. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Mayor, I have a question for, for Mr. Flores.
Yes.
How did you come up with how many we were going to order?
So we got, yeah, so what we did is we met with, we met with Omar Kantu, who's our distribution. We met with Joseph Bala, who is, you know, oversees the, the, the meter readers. We got together with them, we even got together with planning, and we looked at, we looked at, you know, kind of our trends on, on replacing old meters and new construction, and so that's how we came up with, with this amount, so.
Okay, because I have been noticing that at every meeting, we have a lot of development coming into Mission.
Yes.
So just make sure that we're getting enough.
Yes, yes, we do, yeah, and that, that will also, contingency is built into that as well, for any unforeseen circumstances as well, yes.
Thank you, David.
Yes. Okay, item number thirty-nine is approval for ordinance. So since we now just purchased the, the new water meters, so this, if approved, this will be ordinance number 5554. Amending chapter 114, utilities, article two, rates and charges. So basically, what this is, is to adjust the, the, the cost for the water meters that we just approved. The fee will be for new construction, replacement for attrition for water meters that needed to be replaced. The new fee schedule is attached. You want me to go line by line on those? So for three-quarter inch inside-city limits, the, the new rate will be 680 dollars, outside will be 880 dollars. One inch will be 775 dollars, outside-city limits will be 800, 980 dollars. One and a half inch water meter will be 1,025 dollars, outside-city limits will be 1,225 dollars. Two inch will be 2,400 dollars, outside-city limits will be 2,660 dollars. Three inch and, and larger will be at market rate, except for the two-inch, two-inch compound meters, inside-city limits, those will be 2,400 dollars, and outside will be 2,690 dollars. I did include in the Friday memo the, the difference from what, what the, what, you know, the citizens will be paying now as opposed to, to what they will be paying in the future, and this is set to go into effect November 1st.
Now, just, everyone understands, so John Doe has a meter, and it's no longer working, and we replace it. So we put, we'll put an AMI meter in it, and it won't be the old mechanical, so they don't get charged. But let's say I have a house, and I demolish it, and I build a new house, then they're going to pay for the new meter. So this is going to be for new construction only, and not for replacement. If it breaks, we replace it with this new meter. We don't put another mechanical meter. We put, we're trying to get everybody over, eventually over many years, or five or six years, that we'll have all the meters being read electronically.
This is for new service?
New service. So existing service needs to be placed, we replace it with, with these new meters, but they don't get charged because they've been accustomed.
Why was that in January, not October?
Is there a reason why we're starting in November and not October?
Yeah, so once, yeah, now that we approved the purchase of, it's going to take a few weeks to get the new meters in, so, so that's why we're starting on November 1st.
Okay, so you really can't because you don't have them?
We don't have them.
We, we have a few, but, you know, not, not enough to, you know, implement it come October 1st, yes.
Okay.
I guess I was like, to start the fiscal year, that's one hour.
Yes.
October first, even though you're not going to do it, but for.
Just to keep things straight, can we, can we adjust the dates?
Yeah, I can do, effective as, as soon as we can start it. Yeah, I can just make the push that we want to start implementing soon. So we get meters in next week, we can start October first.
Let's start October first.
Yeah, then we start with a year.
Okay.
Be easy to remember.
Okay, I'll, I'll give it the, the vendor, I'm sure they'll, they'll make it happen.
Can we?
No, no, I'm not trying to say that. Okay.
I understand what you're saying.
Our, our, our motion would, would reflect the October first date instead of November first date?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Mayor, I'm going to approve. With the, with the starting date, with the, will take effective November, October first, twenty-twenty-four.
Yes. Okay.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number fifty-five, fifty-five?
Fifty-five, fifty-four.
Fifty-four? Okay. Yes. Fifty-five, fifty-four, to amend the dates, I mean, I'm sorry, to amend the charges as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero.
Okay, so item number forty is for the second, okay, this is for the secondary residential meter for irrigation only. As you remember, we, we wanted, for those residents, I wanted to get an irrigation meter for the sprinkler system. Those would be half off, and that's basically what this is. It's, it's allowing to establish a revised special fee for secondary AMI water meters for irrigation purposes only for homes built prior to January one, twenty-twenty-four, or new residential construction at the time of applying for new, new connection. No deposit will be required for the secondary meter, provided that there is already existing primary meter at that location. This does not include borrowing fees or tapping costs. Applicant must be in compliance with Article Six, which is backflow prevention devices. New fees for secondary AMI water meter will be effect October first, aligned with the previous item. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number fifty-five, fifty-five, with the date of October first as the start date. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Next item?
Thank you very much.
Mayor, council, city manager, approval of capital asset policy for the city of Mission. The policy will govern the capitalization threshold and useful life of assets to determine appropriate, appropriate depreciation and amortization of assets throughout the life of acquired assets. It will also provide a policy for inventorying and tracking capital assets, including the introduction of capital asset acquisition, transfer, and dissolution processes. This policy continues to utilize the existing capitalization threshold of five thousand dollars and formalizes the capital asset recognition and governance processes for the city of Mission. The policy is intended to take effect on October first, twenty-twenty-four of the new fiscal year to ensure seamless transaction, just trans, transition during the audit process. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
Are there any questions, discussion?
I'm going to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the capital asset policy for the city of Mission as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously, five-zero. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have a tabled item that's, that's there, are we?
We, I'd like, P and Z tabled it. We are also asking that you leave it on the table. We've got two basic options that we're going to present for P and Z. You know, one that Suzie's come up, and one that our city attorney's come up. So we ask that it'll be left on the table.
Okay, so no action then? Okay, so we'll move on to routine matters, and that would be city manager comments.
Yes, we've got a couple of things coming on. Paint the Bowl giving to the RGV Food Bank as Tuesday, the twenty-fourth, at six-thirty PM at the Mission Event Center. We have Fire Prevention Festival, celebrating or recognizing Fire Prevention Week, October the fourth, at six PM at Leo Peña Placita Park. And then this is getting everybody anticipating of the Halloween Spooktacular Festival that we will have at the Mission Events on October thirty-first, starting at six PM.
Okay, thank you. Comments or counsel?
Ms. Jessica? I just can't believe it's almost going to be Halloween.
Yeah.
Everybody be safe.
Not commenting.
No comments?
I, I just want to reiterate what mayor said earlier about fire prevention, how important it is to check your fire alarms and your smoke detectors in your house and replace those batteries in when annoying beep starts. Don't disconnect it, just put a new battery in it. It is, it is saddening to my heart that we did lose citizens this year to fires, so. Yeah, just check them, be safe, thank you.
Thank you.
No comments.
No, okay. I don't have any comments today, so we will move on to executive session. Is there a motion to move on to executive session? Second. There's a motion and a second to go into executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-seven-four and five-five-one point zero-seven-one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries unanimously.
Second.
Motion and a second to reconvene, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, motion carries four zero. The first item, um... There's nothing on the first item, which is the evaluation stuff.
Yeah, nothing on the first one.
And on the second one, uh, second item, item number two. May I have a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session?
I'm, I'll make a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to go, uh, to move forward as discussed in executive session for the item, uh, related to Black Diamond Developers. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries three zero. And, uh, I'm sorry, it's three, uh, four, one abstention.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Okay, and, um, item three?
Also to move forward.
I'll discuss that in executive session.
Yes.
Now my motion is to move forward but discuss on a second agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to move forward as is discussed, uh, in executive session in regards to the, um, land situated that is, uh... Right, starting tomorrow. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.